We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Tevin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, please help guide us this evening as we do the business of the city. Please help our city to have a wonderful summer season and look over our youth as they're out of school, and please keep them safe. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to add a communication from the Civil Service Board.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda to add Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, resolutions.
Resolution 415, memorializing the late Dorothy J. Riker, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to her family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Resolution 04-15 be adopted on its first reading after having been read.
Second. The motion in the second is to adopt Resolution 415 on its first reading after having been read. I'll have the clerk read the resolution.
Whereas, on February 25th, 2015, the Lima community was saddened by the death of Dorothy J. Riker. Dorothy was an outstanding Lima citizen who was devoted to her community and her many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima community. And whereas Dorothy J. Riker, the first woman to serve as a Lima City Council member, was elected to the newly formed Eighth Ward in 1973, Dorothy continued to serve in that position until 1991 and served on virtually every committee of council. And whereas during her service on council, Dorothy was thoughtful in her opinions, her words could always be trusted, and she always kept the best interest of the city of Lima in mind when making decisions. Her integrity in public service is unsurpassed. And whereas Dorothy Riker was committed to her community and served on many charitable and service organizations, she retired from the YWCA, was a former board member of Lima Memorial Hospital, and was very active in the PTA both on the local and state levels. And whereas Dorothy received many awards for her community service, including the YWCA Outstanding Service Award, the Woman of the Year from the Seroptimus Club, the Outstanding Career Woman Award from the International Women's Committee, and an Ohio Life Membership in the Ohio Congress of Parents and Teachers. And whereas Dorothy J. Riker was a devoted and enthusiastic citizen whose services will be sorely missed by the residents of the Lima community, and it is the desire of the Lima City Council to formally express deepest regrets upon the death of Dorothy Riker and offer condolences to her family and friends. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Lima hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Dorothy J. Riker to the Lima City Council and the Lima community and extends condolences to her family and friends.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? I just want to say, because I think I'm the only sitting council member who actually served with Dorothy from the years of 1990 and 91. She was a good friend, and it was painful when we disagreed on an issue because, with all due respect, it was kind of like arguing with your mom. But she was always also respectful of, I mean, at that time I was considered, you know, the younger wave coming into council, and she was respectful of that. And she, even after she retired, I would run into her occasionally, and she would give me her thoughts, whether it was good or bad, but she shared her opinions and was always encouraging even when there were tough decisions to be made. So I'm truly sorry for her loss, but I'm very, very happy that I was able to serve with her on council and got to know her through the years. I'm going to have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Before I do that, Mr. Mayor, I know you served with her too. Did you want to have anything to say?
Well, I did have the opportunity to work with Dorothy both before I was elected to the position of mayor and, of course, afterwards. And Dorothy and Edgar, her husband, were good friends for me and my family. Our work together on behalf of the city, I think, was a high point for me, and I certainly appreciated the support she gave me later because she continued to work in a variety of ways with a variety of boards and was one of my campaign co-chairs in a later campaign. So Dorothy has been, and I've stayed, I stayed in touch with her while she was in her later years. So to the family, she was really a wonderful lady to know and to work with and really has, I think, established a model for citizen engagement and citizen service.
Thank you. Now I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Resolution 415 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. With us this evening are several family members from Dorothy's family, and I know some have traveled as far, I believe, as Cincinnati to be with us this evening, and I do appreciate that. Her son, Tim Riker, her daughter Sue Polder, and her husband Alan, and their grandson Andrew, her daughter Nancy Ricks, and grandson George Ricks, and granddaughter Kay Feldman, and husband Frank, and great-grandson Daniel. Now, Tim, since you're going to be the spokesman, I have to ask a question. Is there a niece that is a lawyer practicing in Toledo? What's her name?
Tanya.
Tanya. I had the pleasure of meeting her about three years ago. I got seated on the jury for a case in federal court, and she kept looking over like she knew me, and I kept looking back like, what's she looking at me for? What have I done? And she came, after it was all over, we couldn't, she couldn't talk to me about it during the process, but when it was all over, she came up to me and introduced herself, and she had caught, they somehow had mentioned in the papers to the lawyers that I was on city council in Lima. So she came up afterwards and introduced herself as Dorothy's granddaughter or niece?
Niece.
Niece. So it was, it really kind of shrinks the world in, and I, just kind of a small anecdote, but if you want to come forward, I'll present you the resolution.
Thank you. If you want to say a few things.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Berger. On behalf of the family, we thank you very much for this very, very kind gesture. When I was listening to the resolution, the standout phrase that I heard about Mom was "devoted and enthusiastic citizen of Lima." That is golden truth. She was always devoted to this town, to this community. She was always enthusiastic about serving, whether it was the PTA or through the YMCA. But her service on Lima City Council was a very, very special part of her life's work. So she would be very pleased. And, Mr. President, I can appreciate your comments earlier because we haven't met before how painful it was sometimes to disagree. But you're also correct that in the end, she always held the community first. And I'm glad the mayor mentioned Dad, Edgar Riker, because it's very difficult to fully appreciate the marries that the two of them had and how they really worked together. And one thing that I recall particularly from growing up was the incredibly high level of discourse between these two citizens across the supper table about Lima, about projects, whether it was reservoirs, or airports, or street paving, or whatever was facing the city. These two citizens were very much engaged and would educate each other back and forth, and then Dad, less the public person, very private, but Mom, more the public person, would go forward and take the positions she did. I also want to mention here in public with appreciation the eloquent remarks the mayor made at the funeral service. They were very touching. We heard them very carefully, and we appreciate that also. So, behalf of my sisters, nieces, nephews, and I was reminded that Tanya is actually a great niece.
Okay.
Because it was two generations down. But on behalf of the whole family, this is a very special memory of Lima, Ohio, that our family will treasure. Thank you again.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Mr. President, just a comment. He's not in his uniform. He's in civilian clothes now, but Mr. Riker, Tim, is in the Lima Senior Hall of Fame, having spent a career in the Coast Guard and was a rear admiral in charge of half the world.
Wow.
And all the ports of the U.S. around the globe.
Thanks for your service.
So he's, very much merits that status at Lima Senior.
Wow. That's great.
Congratulations. Next is a public hearing regarding the 2016 tax budget. I'll have the clerk read the call.
Notice is hereby given that on the eighth day of June 2015 at 7:00 PM in the Lima City Council chambers, 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held upon the 2016 tax budget for the city of Lima. All interested persons desiring to speak to the budget will be given an opportunity to do so at that time. Following is a summary of the budget. General Fund, $30,276,583. Water Works Fund, $14,544,498. Sewer Disposal Fund, $12,330,888. Garbage and Refuge Fund, $2,727,056. Guaranteed Water Deposit, $4,090,482. Sewer Improvement, $6,367,285. Stormwater Sewer, $2,448,284. And Miscellaneous Fund, $16,654,209. For a total of $89,439,285. Copies of the entire tax budget are on file in the Office of the Clerk of Council and the Office of the City Auditor, Municipal Center, 50 Town Square, and will be open to public inspection during working hours.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to the issue of the 2016 tax budget? For the second call, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of the 2016 tax budget? For the final call, is there anybody that would like to speak to the issue of the 2016 tax budget? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and Items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve Item A and to receive and file Items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move Communication Number One, receiving and filed. Legislation on the night agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Comp Management.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From the Deputy Law Clerk, Law Director requesting legislation to amend Section 238.03 of the codified ordinances.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed when the Law Director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Four and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From downtown Lima regarding appointments to the design review board.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From the Auditor regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Staley Insurance Group.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Thank you. I guess my question would be to Mr. Bartels. In the second paragraph, it states that the insurance holder did not submit the lowest bid, and then it goes on to say, however, the bid was the lowest bid, says however, their bid was the lowest bid that met all our specifications. Can you be more clear? What, what were you looking for that the other ones didn't offer?
I thought I had that spelled out in the communication, Mr. Lowe, but in short, there were two items. One, our specs called for a policy that was a non, if someone bid a pool, that it was to be a non-accessible pool, and in my estimation, the low bid is an accessible pool. And what that means is if the pool's assets aren't sufficient to cover claims outstanding, they can go back on the members of the pool and collect the difference, and we do not want that. We were very clear about that in our specs. The other area of concern was whether or not claims were made, claims were a, an occurrence-based or a claims-made basis, and we wanted an occurrence-made claim, and that was not the case. That was the case in the low bid until we would leave the pool, and then it's no longer an occurrence-based claim. We'd have to get tail insurance to cover that.
Is there a period on that, tell us, answer?
I'm not sure what it is, but that, again, those, those items were very, those two items specifically were very clear in our specs, and the low bid did not meet those specs.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Deputy Director of Streets regarding legislation to enter into agreement for a memorial for the College Street Bridge.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Seven and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Law Director regarding legislation created municipal probation services fund.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Civil Service Board regarding a G.I.S. administrative technician.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next is a committee report from the Council of the Whole Meeting. Council of the Whole met on Monday, June 1st. The committee meeting report was submitted in writing to all councilors. Ahead of time, I would ask that, I will move that the communication be received, filed, and approved. Second. Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next ordinances, ordinance 115-15.
Adopting the tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year for the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 115-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 115-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ordinance 115-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 116-15.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 116-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 116-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Ordinance 116-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 117-15.
Amending the 2015 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 117-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 117-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ordinance 117-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 118-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Staley Insurance Group.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 118-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 118-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ordinance 118-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 119-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of equipment for the Utilities Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 119-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 119-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Ordinance 119-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 120-15.
Establishing a municipal probation services fund as herein described.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 120-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 120-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Ordinance 120-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 121-15.
Granting permission to Square Fair Inc. to hold a toast to the city in the town square.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Ordinance 121-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 121-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Ordinance 121-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 122-15.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $101,900 for the purpose of paying the property owner's portion in anticipation of the collection of special assessments of the cost of constructing sidewalks at various locations in the city, together with all necessary occurrences thereto in the manner provided in Resolution 1013 and Ordinance 5314.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that the fiscal officer's certificate be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file the fiscal officer's certificate. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Excuse me. I move that Ordinance 122-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 122-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lo.
Yes. Ordinance 122-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Next is miscellaneous business. Mr. Tevin.
One item. Tomorrow night, there is your citywide focus meeting at six o'clock at the Lacknip Resource Center. The department heads along with the mayor will be on hand to discuss current events in the city and answer questions that those may have. So please take the opportunity to engage with city officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams. Sorry, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, Mr. President. A couple of things there. First of all, I want to thank all the folks who did a successful job on our cleanup and Neighborhood Association. And we want to do a big thanks for Husky. Husky had a lot of employees came out to help out, and it was organized great. Jackie Tyree, Ms. Cos, Denise Cos, you guys did a great job. That's the first one I've seen was so well organized. And we got a lot of stuff cleaned up. And the wish list went down. We got a lot of things done. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate the hard work that Mr. Allen did for naming the bridge, naming the bridge for Mr. Potts. Mr. Allen, thank you so much for all the work you put into that to make this happen. This is great and for a special person. Also, I appreciate a couple of churches came aboard and helped out with the kids in the youth program, and they gave me some calls, and now the kids will start working. Some of the kids started working this weekend. And I thank them so much for sending us volunteers. We got 17 volunteers, and they taking advantage of showing the kid what they need to do, some of the things I couldn't get to due to my family, but I really miss the kids. And like I say, it's very important that we try to work with our kids on getting the program, getting things together about, learning about work experience. Amy had a meeting today about the CBG. The five-year plan looks really good. So on the website, and I know there's a lot of things we need to do, I'm hoping that we adopt right away and get you some things for the population and also the child program. We gave a report, and looked really good, too. So we're on the road, getting things done there, continue moving in the right direction. And Todd always say, be happy all the time, smile, be happy. I'm saying, helping neighbor out, you know? Because we got a lot of neighbors need help. They need help with their housing, and I see some of the things. We got the CBG money there that can be able to help some of them out. A lot of older people don't want to move, and you know, and trying to get donation and donations, trying to help them out on different things, but we can come together and allow them to stay in their homes for more years, and that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Miles.
The Westgate Neighborhood Association will not meet this month here due to the third Sunday following on, on June 21st, which is Father's Day. So no meeting for the Westgate Neighborhood Association. As Tom mentioned, his prayer schools out and kids are out and about riding their bikes, scooters, and those, those type things. So as that, we be very cautious, you know, with driving around the community and, and just kind of be on the lookout for, for kids on their bikes and so forth here. Asking parents to be mindful of the curfew times that, which I have seen published on television and various places, just to make sure our kids are safe and, and where they should be during these summer months here and keeping them out of harm's way. Children, obey your parents. I know sometimes you think that you're smarter than they are, but they do know what they're talking about, so.
That's right.
Ask our children to be safe this summer here, and we want to see all of them return back to school in, in the fall here. So just wishing everyone, you know, all these kids are safe and, and fun and, and a very peaceful summer in our community here. A couple of other things here. Some congratulations to the, to the Lima Senior High Track Team who placed at state this weekend, and Columbus is very, very proud of them, not just of Lima Senior High, but any teams that participated in the state competition. So want to say congratulations to Coach Carter, Coach Curtis, and all the athletes that participated in the, in the state track meet this, this past weekend. Also want to say congratulations to the Encore Theater for the cast of The Raisin in the Sun. This weekend, they also competed in Mount Peoria, Ohio for a segment of their play, which got great reviews here in Lima, Ohio. They went to Mount Peoria this weekend and competed among other theater groups in, in the Northwest Ohio. It's called the Ohio Community Theater Association. And they competed there, and they came out with an outstanding rating. And so the, the production and the director now have the opportunity to go to state in, in Cincinnati and compete there. So again, congratulations to that cast. Congratulations to the Encore Theater for selecting that particular play, and, and congratulations to the director for his efforts and helping this, this group here not only win the award for the Northwest Association, but also hopefully will bring home the state title in Cincinnati when they go there in September. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, for the record, this telephone that went off up here is not mine. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I have an idea.
You sure they answered?
Yeah, I just don't want any kind of problems from the president or anybody.
Most of the people have turned off the TV and still think it's yours.
Yeah. I'm cheap. I don't get that nice of them. But anyways, on, on behalf of the Warriors, the Lima Warriors, I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out and doing the coin toss at our football game. He must have been good luck because the Warriors won pretty big. So, thank you. And the only other thing I have, you might be really surprised at this.
I remembered it better than some.
Yeah. But I want to remind people to be good to one another.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. Back on the, and Mr. Glenn brought up about the neighbors, we have to be cognizant of your, your neighbors. You know, some of them were a little older than you maybe, and if you see their grass get behind because it's growing faster than I can keep it mowed, so, you know, help them out. Give them a hand because they, they probably gave back in their time, so give a little help to them and make sure that your neighborhood is in good shape and, you know, it takes care of you. So be mindful of that.[1598.03]